Okay, we are on the air.
Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board. It is June 25th, 2024. It's just after 7:30, 7:32. Deborah, if you would take the honor of reading the announcements.
Absolutely. Number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the ECOS, posting a copy of the public meeting hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the ECOSentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any meeting or hearing conducted by the board is a quasi-judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial meeting or hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, electronic devices. All attendants are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Number four, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Deputy Mayor Lavender?
Present.
Committeeman Ray is excused this evening. Ms. Dill?
Present.
Mr. Hands?
Here.
Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. Opalka?
Here.
Mr. Sandow?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Present.
Chairman Richardson?
Here.
We have accord.
Thank you. Okay, so to start off, we're at item number six. And this is the review and approval of the meeting minutes from the May 28th, 2024 meeting. That's a real lengthy set of minutes there. Don't forget, there is a backside. Double page.
All right, saving trees.
Yep.
This is stupid, eh? What's the difference there?
Oh.
Which one's correct?
We'll find out when you get to it.
Oh, you didn't?
Can someone who was in attendance make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along to item number seven. This is the resolution for the Millington Volunteer Fire Company, application 2409P. So I'll open it up to, yes, Mr. Sandow?
I have a number of comments.
Fire away.
My microphone is backward. Okay. On page one, the applicant has applied for an item three, a variance for the placement of a generator and associated concrete pad. The applicant did not apply for a variance for the generator. We shoved that down his throat because it was pre-existing and has existed for probably in the neighborhood of 20 years. And there is a loophole in the language of the notice that said the board could adopt any additional variances that were required. And it was somebody, maybe me, who were quick to point out that the generator had never been approved. And so it is wrong to say that the applicant applied for that variance.
Do you have suggested alternative language?
I do not. I am not an attorney. And I'm not sure whether an attorney wrote this or not. Also, on page one, at bullet number one, it says, "A minimum of 10 feet is required pursuant to section LU 131 and attachment one of the township's land use ordinance." There is no attachment one to the township's land use ordinance. There is only section 131. Now, it happens that the online codifiers have chosen to not put that page in line, but rather to make it an attachment to their website. And we've got to fix that because that is a nuisance. But it is in accord, only in accordance with LU 131. Attachment one has nothing to do with it. That's just a, a publishing convenience. It's not an official attachment. Similarly, in number two and in number three on that page. Moving right along, on page six. I'm waiting for the attorney to catch up with page six.
I'm calling.
On page six, at the top of the page, the following conditions, one, any and all outstanding taxes and escrow fees shall be paid. This applicant does not pay taxes. They are tax exempt. How can we require them to pay taxes if they don't get a tax bill? And finally, the most egregious failure is on page seven. Now, Committeeman Ray, who was a member of this board, is also the president of the Millington Fire Company. As such, he would, if he had come to the meeting, he would have had to recuse himself from this hearing. However, at the top of the page, it says, no, none, recused, none, not eligible, none, absent, none. Committeeman Ray was either absent or recused and should be listed somewhere in that top paragraph. Also, in the vote on the resolution table, Committeeman Ray is marked as not eligible. Yeah, I guess he's absent from tonight's meeting. So maybe he needs two Xs. I'm not sure. And that is the extent of my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think before we move on, is there, I think we can resolve, if I'm not mistaken, he recused himself, correct, Deborah? From that, from the application?
Technically, yes.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that that was true.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I put him on there because he wasn't present, so.
Okay.
I mean, I did announce at the hearing that he was recused, which is why he didn't attend the hearing.
Right.
But if the board chooses, I can put him as, he should either be in the absent or recused.
Yeah, but I agree. I think he needs to be listed as.
Yep. But he has to be listed somewhere because that would be an egregious issue if anyone decided to sue us. And we always worry about losses.
There you go.
Something else, I'm sorry, something else Mr. Sandow may have missed. I think application number, it should be 2409?
I was going to say that.
Sorry.
That's going to be my little getcha, gotcha moment.
Do we want to see another copy of this before we vote on it? I would like to see another copy.
I don't think we have, unless there's a consensus that we need to see another copy, I think your changes can be made fairly easily.
Yeah. I think your comments were fairly clear, Dennis.
In the spirit of facilitating this resolution to helping the fire department get official, I think that would make sense to me, unless other people have a different opinion.
These are all clerical errors, and we don't want to hold this up another month.
So any questions on those comments? They were excellent comments, and I think they're easily captured and resolved.
Yeah, I didn't draft this, but I think Matt covered the meeting for this, so he took care of it. But I will, I think we can, at least, most of that stuff is pretty easily resolved. But the, as far as Mr. Sandow's comments regarding.
Would you please send me a copy of the corrected version before it is signed? Because I'd like to take one last look at it. I think this is a little bit too much to go on a verbal.
If the board, well, here's the thing, if the board votes to adopt it with those changes, and you have additional changes, then we can't.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I would agree that the board could adopt it with the changes, but I would like to see the changes before their resolution is signed off and put in the record. Just in case, I have to ask to bring it up again.
No, it's not, it's unofficial.
Yeah.
I don't know what we can do with any comments you have after we vote on this.
That's not normal.
Well, we can always revise the resolution.
Well, no, not without.
But that's one of the reasons why I'd like to postpone this until we have a clean copy in front of us to vote on.
What of these clerical changes would you have a problem with in regards to trusting that our faithful board attorney can't make in real time?
If you, you have more faith in the board attorney than I have.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we, let's, board attorney, please cycle through the changes, and let's review them one last time.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll defer the vote for today.
Yeah, well, we haven't finished with any other input from the rest of the board. So is there any other changes?
No, it's not for me. Application number.
Okay. So can we make, is there a motion to accept these conditionally?
No, I think we'll.
Yeah, the board attorney just, just kind of.
Right now?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You can read them back so we didn't miss anything, and Dennis is comfortable.
And let's make sure we're clear, because you can always go back to the videotape and then replay what we just discussed.
Good idea.
Right. So my, everything sounds pretty easy. My only thing I have to, I have to kind of think out a second is the variance for the, for the generator.
Can I make a suggestion for you?
Yeah.
I would take it out of the whereas clause where it is stating that they applied for it. Just take it out and put it in as a finding where it was suggested by the board to be incorporated to rectify or, you know. Go ahead.
My hesitation, what I was going to get to, did the applicant, my question, because I wasn't here for the hearing. All right. Did the applicant agree to amend their proposal to request that variance?
Yes.
Okay, so then they would have applied, then they would have applied for it under the, you know, the plain meaning of the word applied for. If they were revising their proposal to request it, they're applying for it. It may have happened during hearing.
Is it considered a part of the application?
But it was not part of the application.
That's up to the attorney to just, yeah, I don't.
Was it not a condition?
No, it wasn't, because it's an existing condition that they got a variance for.
What?
Okay, hold on.
Just make my point real quick. I think this might solve it. So what I, my typical course of action, everybody at my firm drafts these differently. What I typically do is I'll put a footnote at the end of either the variance relief for that first whereas paragraph. And in the footnote, I'll say, the applicant did not initially seek this variance, but during the hearing, it came up, you know, something along those lines to indicate that it wasn't part of the initial application submission, but that it came up later on in the process.
That would be sensible.
So if that, if that works for everybody, I could easily do that.
So the last sentence in paragraph 15 kind of covers that, right?
Even put like, see paragraph 15 or whatever.
Where it says, the applicant requested, which the applicant requested after this required variance was discovered by the board planer.
Right. Yeah, I could make a reference to paragraph 15 as well.
Yeah. In your footnote.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, I think that there's enough changes that have now been discussed that we need to see the written, another written version again before we go.
I don't think we're done cycling through what you said the first time, so let's keep going.
Let's keep going through the comments.
All right, so let me go from the, I'll start again at the top. First change, application number needs to be revised to 24-09P. Is that the right application number at that?
Nine, 09.
09.
09, okay, not 01. Okay, just wanted to confirm that. Check. Moving down the list, the references to attachment one should be removed from the items of variance relief listed there. I'll throw a footnote on number three indicating that this variance wasn't initially applied for, but it came up during the hearing in that, you know, the applicant submitted their proposal to request this item of relief. It's typical of what I, what I do. I don't, you know, Matt, who did this, he does things differently.
You can refer to number 15.
Yeah, and refer to number 15, right.
Yeah.
I'll add a note to that. One second. Okay. I don't think there's anything in page two, nothing in page three, nothing.
It should also be mentioned in that, that the generator pre-existed this application and had been installed without prior approval, which is why we're in this situation of having to talk about it. But the resolution should make note of that.
Okay.
The reference to paragraph 15, that's page four, page five, page six, just eliminating the word, the words taxes and from that first sentence. So it should just say, any and all outstanding escrow fees shall be paid in full, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
And then page seven, inserting Committeeman Ray's last name, either, I think, I guess, just under recused would make the most sense. And then, I think that's it. Then he obviously wouldn't be not eligible because he was recused and wasn't here, so I think that's the proper placement for it, but for that X in the, in the chart, but I think that's it. Oh, wait, also, be further resolved this resolution, oh, yeah, June 25th. Okay, it's the correct. Okay, that's, I think that's it. Those six changes, I think I counted? I think so.
That's the most.
Yeah, I lost count, but. I think I counted six. Yeah. With the exception of just that generator footnote reference, the rest are very. That's the biggest piece. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so hearing the cycle of changes, is there a motion to approve with the understanding that these changes will be made and that you will dutifully review the videotape and take in incorporation?
I will make sure that everything is buttoned up.
It might just actually make more sense to break up paragraph 15 where the part that, in addition, becomes paragraph 16 then. Where you basically, that way, to Dennis's point, that it's separate.
It's carved out?
And it's carved out, and you could say that it's been there for X number of years, and it came up during the board planner review. So it's, it's not part of the rest of that paragraph with what Mr. Hollow showed.
Just a question, is there anything actionable by the applicant with that amendment put in there in the way that we're structuring that paragraph? Like, do they have to now file a permit? Do they have to go do something? Or is it just a matter of record that we're highlighting this?
So I I think they still need a permit, yeah. Once they get a, even if they get a variance, you still have to get a.
So they have an eye for something to go do. They have to go get a permit, close it out, and seek revenge.
We're not 100% sure that they didn't get permits originally, are we?
I, I don't, that's what I'm hearing this conversation saying.
I know.
And I think I'm trying to recall what was discussed during the hearing, and I don't, I don't, I can't remember whether or not there was, they didn't have it, or they have to go get it, or I just don't know, I just can't recall.
Yeah, I'd have to look through the building files to see if they, they had received it or not.
So I think the best thing to do is, yes, carve it out. And if there is something actionable, that they have to action on it.
I, I can't imagine that they did not get permits for that. My, I can imagine that my predecessor didn't give them correct zoning approval, but I can't imagine they didn't get permits for it.
The thing is, regardless of whether or not they did or didn't, that's, the construction office is the issue, that's.
But we're documenting it here, memorializing that we've uncovered this finding, this discrepancy.
Well, as far as the board's concerned, all that you're really concerned about is that it's in the setback. Whether or not a construction permit was, whether a zoning permit was issued is obviously a concern, but whether a construction permit was issued, they would have to get that anyway, whether or not you reference it or not, if they don't have one already. Right. So it kind of goes without saying that they need to comply with that already, that's because of the ordinance, so.
And that would be covered in the catch-all of the resolution where it says, whichever is applicable in the brackets at the end. So if it was, then the catch-all at the end of that paragraph should catch the fact that if that permit
wasn't done, they go do it.
Correct.
If it is done, then they don't need to do it.
So if you break that apart and then you put the catch-all in, if it needs to get done, then it should be covered by that.
I think there's probably other, yeah, condition six, but I'll show cover that too. The applicant shall tune government approval from any other governmental agencies of jurisdiction relating to the property.
Right.
You know, there's your construction department. Four might cover that as well. Applicants shall comply with responsible for any costs associated with all these other outside requirements. But yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty much covered. They're going to have to get it in if they don't have it, right?
Good with that?
Okay.
You feel comfortable with capturing what's been said this evening?
Absolutely.
So a new paragraph 16 then?
Yeah, well, yeah, I have a note, but we'll make that.
So with those amendments, I approve this application.
Do you move to it for?
Second.
That's a motion.
For what it is worth, I just discovered in my notes that I discovered that generator in place in 2007. So it was installed prior to, prior to 17 years ago at some unknown time with apparently no authority. If you, if you want to put.
We don't know there was no authority. I don't pull the files.
Say again?
We don't know there was no authority. I haven't pulled the files for the records for it.
So we have a motion from Dave.
Yeah, I'm moving to approve as amended.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes. Mr. Hands?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lavender?
Yes.
Ms. Dill?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Mr. Opalka?
Yes.
Mr. Sandow?
I'm going to abstain because I'd like to see this thing completely rewritten before it's, before I vote for it.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, on to the next item. It's our agenda item number eight, a board discussion associated with ordinance development. I'll yield to Mr. Jones.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So the last time we met, we were discussing three items to, for ordinance review, two of which we settled on, the third being shed. Sheds was asked to, by the board, to go back and have the team take a look at it and come back with some assessments. So we did that. In our discovery, I did go to various shed manufacturer websites. I did not go to them on site in person and started to glean some of the information off those sites on shed height, shed width, shed depth, and square foot, footprint. And in that analysis, I looked at heights from, or square footage from 80 square feet to 200 square feet. And I sent around this morning a table of that assessment. And looking at that, we, as a group, decided that the modifications or recommendations to come back to the board because there were some concerns raised was, one, stay with the 10-foot setback regardless of the size. Use 10 and 1/2-foot height restriction. So looking at some of these sheds, you can see a 200-square foot is, could be anywhere from 10 to 10 and 1/2 feet. 192-square-foot shed is 11 and 1/2 feet. You can see, you can see all that in the table that I provided. So we're saying a height restriction of 10 and 1/2 feet. After that, you need to go seek a variance. What we don't want to see is a 2-foot shed. We know that sheds come with crawl spaces and a little extra storage, so we want to account for that, and we don't want to see flat roofs. So give it a peek. I'm sure someone's going to stick something decorative on top of it or whatever. But, you know, at least the ridge line's 10 and 1/2 feet. And also, not, the footprint of the shed should not exceed 200 square feet. After 200 square feet, then you need to go and obtain a construction permit. But this 200-square-feet doesn't talk solely about enclosed space. Some of these decks that I, sorry, some of these porches I've seen can get quite elaborate. They have decks, they have covered porches, extensions hanging off of them. They're almost a mini-house. So included in that 10, that 200-square-foot footprint does cover covered areas. So it's not just, you can have 100-foot, 100-square-foot enclosed space with another covered or porch or deck on it for another 100 square feet. That's a 200-square-foot footprint. So those are the suggestions that we, that we brought together. We did talk amongst ourselves, and I think we're pretty confident in saying that this is pretty sound. So that, so that's it. Our recommendation is stay within the 10-foot setback regardless of the size. 10 and 1/2 feet is the max on height. After that, you must seek a variance. And 200-square-foot footprint regardless if it's, has a deck on it, a porch. And that's it. The other recommendation is, don't do anything and leave it at 100 square feet as it's currently stated.
Okay, thank you. Discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. What's, what's the rationale for the 10-foot setback?
These, that's the, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's an ordinance.
The current ordinance.
So that's, we're staying consistent with the ordinance. There was discussion around if you get a bigger shed, do you have a bigger setback? And I started playing with that, and I said, this is ridiculous. Before you know it, you're going to have this massive shed sitting in the middle of your backyard. So stay with the 10-foot, and that's the reason why.
But what's the rationale, what do you think the rationale is for it?
What would have been the rationale?
Can anybody here generate a rationale for a 10-foot setback?
I think to put some vegetation between the shed and the property line was, had always been what I'd seen in other ordinances.
Preservation of a.
We've seen a lot of, we've seen a lot of properties where neighbors have their shed on their property lines backed up to each other.
They're not following the setback.
I know they're not following the rules, but.
There's also a drip line off of the shed where the water could be pouring, if you have it sitting right on, it's, water's pouring on the neighbor's property. So it's to kind of give a buffer to the neighbor. So that's the rationale that I'm, I would assume is why the 10-foot is there.
Well, in the last meeting, we brought up a fenced-in yard. Would you consider some relief to like 5 feet if it was a solid fence?
Say in 10 feet.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of agree with Tom here, especially with some of the narrow properties. It does make sense to have a shed right in the middle of the backyard like that, especially if you have a fence.
It's 10 feet off your.
Yeah, that's.
Maybe Dennis has a. Yes.
I still contend that the 200-square-foot shed is in fact a one-car garage.
Oh, wait, wait a second. That's a great point, but let's stay on the setback here for a second. We're not done with that. Do you have a comment on the setback?
Yeah, we just wanted to hit the setback comment first.
I'm not sure whether you're contending that the setback should be more or less than 10 feet.
I think it should be less. I think, I think, I think 5 feet is.
Well, consider the neighbors. Consider if your neighbor wanted to put a one-car detached garage 5 feet from your property line.
What if it's an 8-by-10 shed? Is that the same, is that the same thing?
Well, the 10-foot is in there to create a standard for the town. And whether it's 10 feet or 7 feet or, or 5 feet, that's a different discussion. But 10-foot is what we've been going on. Anything closer than 10-foot has always required a variance. But the 100-foot, 100-square-foot is a sort of a reasonable compromise for a useful shed. But a 200-square-foot shed is a garage, and I certainly wouldn't want that 10 or 5 feet from my property line.
As far as I'm concerned, a 10-by-20 shed is really a barn. That's a huge, that's a huge building. But I would say most, most residents have something in the order of like an 8-by-12 shed. Right?
Well, it's just not stopping you. It's just allowing you to go to some, for me, it's a height. I don't want a 10-foot shed right next to my 8-foot fence with my neighbors, the 8-foot fence and the 10-foot. Because that's, that's pretty high to be that close. So, but I do, I do get the point about the smaller lots. Yeah, but then it's a consumer decision. They, they can go somewhere. They, they can go somewhere smaller.
So, as people are watching, what would the process be if someone to put, wanted to put an eight-by, eight-by-twelve shed, five-foot from their property line, their neighbor agrees, do they have to go get a variance?
Yep.
Yep.
And what does that cost?
Upwards of three thousand dollars, over three thousand dollars. Six hundred and fifty dollars for the application fee, twenty-five.
That's more than the shed.
Yeah, that's double.
So, so maybe it's the fees are the issue as well, right?
Fees are for us to tackle.
No, I know, but I was just saying it's the point. If you're saying that's a cost, then it's the fees are the cost. That's the issue, it's not the, the rules. And, and your neighbor today may say it's great, your neighbor, they sell the house and the next neighbor say, what's going on? I got something right there, take it down. Then they're gonna fight it. And it's gonna fight it.
It's there before he buys the house.
Yeah, but they're gonna fight it.
My concern is, is if you have a fenced-in yard, you should be able to move in a little bit closer. I could see open yards or if you have just a split-rail fence where it's totally visible. If you have a six-foot-high fence, a vinyl fence, you can't see through it.
Solid fence.
Solid fence. I mean, when you did your research, how high are the walls on most sheds? Are they, they're.
That's seven-and-a-half.
Seven-and-a-half. So that's, you know, a foot over.
But there's different types, right? You have your regular up and over, then you have the barn-style look, so they, they kind of change.
Right, they have the gable kind of offset.
The lean-to kind of.
Right, there's all different sides. So if you're looking at a wa, five feet off your, behind your fence and you're looking at a foot and a half of shed for the garage, I don't see that as being a big problem.
Tom, I think your original hesitation was not wanting to have to have like different proportions, but like maybe want like two different height requirements, like depending on if there's a fence or not. It seems like a little bit different than go. I get not wanting like a grid like this, well, if it's this tall, this wide, it's this tall. But I think like having a fence exception is a little bit different than like a proportion.
Solid fence.
And we just talked about a fence that, um, at the last one, that stated that, um, you have to get a permit for eight-foot, right? We moved it from four to six.
Anything over, anything over six feet, you have a construction permit.
Up to six, we moved from four to six. Over six, you have to get it.
Anything over six feet, you need a construction permit, yeah.
So if you have a six-foot fence, then are we saying, are you saying that it's a five-foot setback?
That's what I would recommend.
It's, it's in proportion to the fence.
I'm not married to it. I, I just don't want to have a whole grid.
Yeah.
You know?
No, no, I understand, you know, this, yeah, you don't want.
But it's gotta be a solid fence. You can't, it's not a chain link, it's not a corral fence or anything like that.
Right.
And how high is the?
Six feet.
How high is the shed?
Let's recognize.
It's better than ten-and-a-half.
Yes.
That close.
The peak of the roof.
At its peak, right?
At its peak.
There are a lot of houses in this town that are on reasonably narrow lots. The R-four and the R-five zone, fifty-foot lots. And the neighbor is on a fifty-foot lot. And many of those houses do not have garages. They park on the street. They have in fact made gravel parking lots at the curb line, uh, which probably is also not permitted. But if we give them the opportunity to put a shed in their backyard without having, because they can't expand their house because the footprint of the house is restricted by the no, the defined side yard setback, which is twenty-five or thirty feet depending on the zone you're in. And so they're, the, the lot simply isn't wide enough to add a garage to the side of their house. But they can put a detached shed ten feet or five feet from the property line and get their car undercover. And this is what I call a potential for mischief.
That's an everything, Dennis. I hate to, I bear bad news, but anything we put in, someone's going to manipulate.
The difficulty with, the difficulty is that if they plant a shed in their backyard close to the property line, they're going to have to put in a driveway. And they may or may not do that legally. To put in a driveway, they're actually gonna have to come to the board, uh, for a site plan review of the lot coverage. And on those small lots, adding the shed and a driveway will probably blow the lot coverage requirement. So you're, for somebody who wants a, a shed large enough to be a garage, and why would you need a shed this big for any other purpose on a fifty-foot-wide residential lot? If that is your intention is to use the shed as a garage, you're gonna have to come to the board anyway for lot coverage. Or you're gonna have to do it without lot coverage approval.
But Dennis, I don't think they would be coming to the board if they were looking to do that.
Exactly. Without approval, I said.
And they're gonna get caught when they're, one, the zoning official goes around and checks, or two, when they go to sell their house and it gets discovered that you have something on your property that doesn't have a permit.
It doesn't always get discovered.
Well, there's a chance for that. There's always a chance for that, yes.
Well, do we, do we want to let it go to that extreme that it becomes an enforcement problem or a restriction on sale? Uh, I, you know, I, I think we can head this off in the beginning by realizing the potential that we're setting up here.
Hi. I think it's worthwhile time. Could you just remind again the board why we're going to, considering the two-hundred square feet? And then we'll go to Deb.
Okay. So, the reason why this came before us was there was the application where we were doing a lot line adjustment. I forget the name, I won't say Pine Street if that was, if that's correct.
Pine Street.
And, um, I think it was a four-hundred-square-foot cinder block building. And the com, there was conversation.
Yeah.
Five-hundred, was it even bigger? All right.
I think so.
So, five-hundred-square-foot cinder block building on this property. And you're only allowed to have a hundred square feet. So there's a lot of conversation around that, what do we do with that piece? Um, there's tax implications. If you go over a hundred square feet, you need to file with the town for that extra square footage, uh, because you'll be taxed on that. The con, the, um, construction, um, you, for anything over two-hundred square feet, you need to get a construction permit. So, there's a gap from a hundred to two-hundred that doesn't get picked up. And nobody knows about unless someone's, I see you, Dennis, stop. No one's gonna pick up on that unless a neighbor complains or a zoning official goes by, maybe at the sale of a house, um, or someone looking at Google Maps and decides, you know, someone has a grudge against somebody, they'll start saying something. So, that's why we started to talk about this. There are people who need, who want a bigger shed, but they don't want something over two-hundred feet. And they want a two-hundred-square-foot shed. Why? They might have a big lawnmower. If someone's sitting on a fifty-by-one-hundred lot, why do you need a two-hundred-square-foot shed? I don't know. You, you need a push lawnmower, you don't need a, a rider. So, that's the reason why we looked at it. And we said, let's have a conversation and discuss whether or not, at least that's my recollection, let's have a conversation about increasing up to two-hundred if that is viable.
Okay. Thank you.
Think I had that right?
Yes. Yes, Dennis.
I don't see any relationship at all between the construction code, two-hundred-foot statement and the zoning size for a shed. I don't see any relationship at all, and I don't believe that we should be doing this because of any, uh, trying to coincide with the, the construction code. There are a lot of situations where the construction code and the zoning ordinance vary, and it's there for a reason. One has to do with safety and, uh, hurricanes, and the other has to do with the neighborhood characteristic. And so I don't see that, that making that argument has any merit at all. My second question is, apparently this is coming from the zoning board because they're having to grant variances for the setback.
Park that question, perk that issue or that statement. Deb, I want to come back to you because you raised your hand. You're on the front line dealing with this for the zoning board. Yeah.
There are really no sheds, very little, many sheds that come in under a hundred feet. There's just not. I mean, people don't, a hundred feet is very tiny.
Ten by ten.
Ten by ten, I mean, I see very little sheds that come in under ten feet, so. And historically, we've not sent people for variances. If they come in for a zoning application and they want a one-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot shed, a one-hundred-and-seventy-five-foot shed, whatever, we don't send them for variances. That's typically what had not been done in the past, although the ordinance says a hundred. In translating the ordinance, my predecessors in zoning and what I have carried forward is the only reason that that said a hundred in the zoning was because of the UCC code. That's where, that's where it correlates for us on the opposite side. The idea of the setbacks as far as, um, five-foot for six-foot fences is a great idea. And in addition to that, what you can also do is that Dennis mentioned some of the smaller zones. There are four residential zones in town. R-four, R-five are your smaller zones. R-five is only one tiny street in the entire town. Let's learn what else.
Plainfield. Three houses in that zone are on Plainfield.
Oh, you're right, you're right, Plainfield, the other side of that, right. So, two small, little tiny areas.
How many homes do we have?
In the R-five?
No, in the entire Long Hill.
Oh, oh, I don't know.
Okay, so we're talking about eight houses.
Well, wait, wait, so my.
And according to the master plan, there's about a hundred and fifty more houses will move into the R-five when we finish the rezoning in the master plan.
So, but that being said, regardless of those, the two R-four zones have a side yard setback of ten foot only. The R-three and the R-four have a setback, I'm sorry, the R-two and the R-three, the larger properties, have a twenty-five-foot setback, a side yard. So it would make sense in addition, if you wanted to do that fence in any zone, say, okay, the six-foot fence, you can have five feet. It would also make sense in the R-four and R-five zones to allow a five-foot setback because those are smaller lots and the, and the setback they need for the actual house is only ten feet. Does that make sense?
Yeah. No.
So you could, you could section out the zones as well and say, okay, R-four and R-five only require a five-foot setback. R-two and R-three zones, you can have a five-foot setback if you have a six-foot fence that surrounds the side and rear property lines.
You gotta have enough space for a lawnmower to get around it, honestly.
So, just looking real fast, according to J.D. Power and a couple other sites, the average size of a single-car garage is two-hundred-and-forty square feet. It's at least twelve by twenty, most are twelve by twenty-two. So that'd be over two-hundred feet right there. So, I understand the concern about people abusing this for a car.
I don't care about the average size of a garage. You could squeeze, easily squeeze, an electric car into a ten-foot-by-twenty-foot garage. It's only six feet wide and fourteen foot long.
But if somebody comes to me as a zoning officer, a garage is a garage, a shed is a shed.
Right.
A garage has a garage door, whether, regardless of the size. A shed does not have a garage door to put a car.
Oh, look in the Sears catalog or the Home Depot catalog.
Sears doesn't exist anymore.
I only look at the toys.
I think, I think our point is, I don't, I don't know that this whole discussion needs to be focused on a one-car garage. If for, like, any topic that we, this is a perfect example of what I was talking about. We want to get into discussions of like, like this, over this. We could go on for hours about things of, of any nature in any scenario. And so I get that that's possible. Watch, this is gonna end up happening left and right, but I personally don't think it's gonna happen very often. So that's why I, in the interest of time and efficiency, I think our point is, do we need to keep talking about a one-car garage? That's my two cents.
No. And it's back to.
The other issue about a shed is that elsewhere in the ordinance, we talk about giving a, a, a credit. That's not the word I want to use. Giving a credit to, to a lot coverage calculation for a shed that is mounted on gravel. If you put in enough crushed stone out two feet beyond the drip line and, God knows how deep, then you don't have to count the shed in the lot coverage calculation. Now, that logic may work for a smaller shed. I'm not sure that that logic works for a two-hundred-foot shed. Can you excuse the whole thing from the lot coverage calculation if you put in enough crushed stone? And we need to have an engineer contemplate whether or not the size of the two-hundred-square-foot shed slash garage, uh, allows you to excuse the impervious coverage situation if you have put in enough truckloads of stone, which also sounds like a town per, a different town permit.
Okay.
Go ahead. Is there a way to, to put something in there that says you can't have an automatic roll-up door? Right? Or something along those lines? If it's really, the concern is that.
No.
You know, if you're putting a shed on a wood base, on crushed stone, on elevated four-by-four, um, uh, floor joists, you are not putting a car on that.
I, I'm, I'm fully on board with you. I'm trying to figure out how you resolve some, Dennis' concern. That, that's what I'm, I, I don't think, personally, I don't think that most people are gonna have a twelve-by-twenty, are gonna have at least a twelve-by-twenty in a one-car garage, right? Which is above what we're already talking about here. Going to pre-built sites, every pre-built garage that I can find is at least twelve by twenty.
Yeah.
So, it's over the two-hundred square feet. So, I can't find any situations where a pre-built comes in that way, right? It seems that anything that would be smaller than that, that you're gonna put a garage, put a car in and build a garage, you're gonna build it. And it's gonna be quite apparent what you're doing, to Dennis' point, that you're gonna be doing all these other things along with it.
You have to run electricity into it.
Yeah.
Right.
Driveways.
Especially if it's an electric car, yeah, you're right.
Right. You know, so I think to, to this point, if we're just focused on making it so that we're streamlining this, if we're trying to bring in other things, I'm trying to figure out if there's a caveat way out or can we just focus on the actual shed setbacks rather than?
Has anyone ever gone to a place where they sell sheds?
Yeah.
Yes. Like Amish, like the Amish sheds?
Yeah.
I've never seen a ten-foot-by-twenty shed. I've seen things, they're in multiples of eight feet. Eight by ten, eight by twelve, eight by sixteen, maybe ten, right? Because they sell two-by-four-by-eights, right? In my opinion, a third of this table is probably this much of what's gonna happen. Second thing, back to the setback. What's the problem with the setback? The drip line. Well, what if you require a gutter on the back of the shed? I've seen people do that. That alleviates the biggest problem with the setback.
Honestly, I think we should do away with any allowance of no impervious coverage for any structure. In my personal opinion, I think that every shed, regardless of size, every structure that you put, because of the way the impervious coverage and the water is treated here in Long Hill and what we see on a daily basis, listen, if you put gravel down of any kind, gravel in Long Hill, whether you're graveling a driveway or a pathway, that's considered impervious.
Right.
So in my opinion.
Simplify it.
Correct. I would take that out altogether and every shed, regardless, and everything you put should be. I mean, decks are a different story. Decks can be handled a little bit differently, we won't get into that. Because that also has a caveat for a fifty percent reduction in lot coverage for certain construction type, but that's different. This is a structure, an actual enclosed structure, in my opinion, based on what we see in the, in the zoning and construction and engineering. I think it should be done away with altogether.
Can you repeat what's done away with, go through it again?
So it's basically, in the residential shed, it says, the shed area will not count as lot coverage provided that a minimum of eight inches of crushed stone is placed under the structure and two feet beyond the drip line.
And by taking that out, it's now all considered impervious.
Correct.
Right.
Right. Because he's gonna go in and measure eight inches.
Because it's virtually impossible to police it. You don't have any inspection process on sheds. Unless it's over two-hundred square feet and they get construction permits.
Okay, but that doesn't alter, that's one added thing, it's not addressing the other stuff, right? The size and the heights and the.
No.
So this is one separate.
No, I just.
I agree with that comment, by the way. I think it should be impervious.
All right, so.
So, can I just, just a couple of points?
Another question you have, Deb, or a comment?
I just want to go through a couple. I think the zones should be a factor. So, I mean, on the smaller zones, then maybe leave it a hundred feet. And maybe, and without looking at the, uh, lot line on those, is it, is it, is it a standard of ten or the, the lot line changes?
Eleven by twenty-one.
The setback, does it change on the smaller?
That's just typical of hundreds that they have on the page.
Whether it be a shed, a garage, a pole barn, is ten feet, twenty height. That's the standard.
Ten feet and?
Ten feet setback from side or rear.
Yeah, and twenty.
And twenty-foot height. That's the current standard for any accessory structure.
Twenty, is twenty feet is accessory?
Cut that in half.
Yeah.
So, cut the shed down to ten. So he's cut the shed down to 10?
Cut the shed down to 10. And it's garden-style. Some other places say garden-style shed, that is not a garage. Right? So if it's a residential shed, it's not a garage.
I get an application that has a garage door of any rolling kind, that's garage.
It's a garage. Or if it's?
Sheds have doors, windows.
So how do we factor in residential?
Did you see the $77,000 shed that I sent around?
We got too many discussions happening at once.
$77,000.
Guys, timeout. You have the floor, David.
Thank you. So let's go back to the zone. Maybe that's a factor we do want to consider, and I think we should, because I think other places have done something similar. So I think 100 square feet for smaller lot sizes makes sense. Right? Height, I think, we'd all agree, 10 feet regardless makes sense, or 10 and a half feet, whichever is. Then it's just a case of the setback. Is it, is 10-foot appropriate? I think 10-foot is probably appropriate, certainly on the larger properties as well. I wouldn't mess around with that. So I think you said 25 feet for some of the really big ones. And somebody sticks a shed five feet away from, no. So I wouldn't mess around with that. It's a case of, then, for the majority, is five feet okay or keep it 10 and just the smaller ones have five feet?
I think what you're talking about is setting a minimum, right?
So.
Which is the five feet.
I don't know if I want, I think 10 feet's appropriate for the larger properties anyhow. Because I don't want a 10-foot thing five feet from my house. Even if I've got an acre of land, I don't think I want that 10-foot thing, no. If something, then you go through the math and say, well, if they put a 5-foot one, 8-foot height one, it's five feet away, then I'm sort of, then where do you end with this thing? So I would keep it 10-foot. Everything you said, you know, the lots, the size depends on the thing, the height, 10-foot regardless, it's just a case of setback, five-foot or not.
The only other thing I would add to that is the fence. So regardless, if it's a large lot or a small lot, 5-foot setback or 10-foot setback, the solid fence at six feet doesn't change the setback.
I don't think it changes the setback to me, no. I think it's still 10 feet on the larger properties.
Is there a setback requirement in front garden?
If it's fenced in, I would make it five, larger, small properties.
Say that, say that one more time.
If the yard is fenced with a 6-foot fence, a 5-foot setback.
So regardless?
Regardless of the lot size, regardless of what's on it.
So regardless of size.
Sure.
If you have a 6-foot fence, then you get a 5-foot setback.
Correct.
Can I throw something out there just for the board to consider? Somebody asked at the beginning, why have a 7-foot setback requirement?
Might have to get a little closer.
I'm sorry. It's been a long few days. One of the reasons I've seen, you know, as a justification for a larger setback is fire safety. So let's say you have two sheds and they're, you know, two feet off the property line each and they're right next to each other. One catches fire, it's gonna spread to the other one, right? Something to consider, you know, especially if you're gonna talk about, you know, a fence being a, you know, something that could alleviate your setback requirement a little bit. You don't want fires to spread, obviously. So just something to throw out there for the board to consider.
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree. I mean, we have plenty of stuff, trees, bushes, and all that other kind of stuff that burns, so I don't think that's relevant.
I'm just telling you why.
Legitimate, but.
It's a concern.
Just to clarify, to Dennis's point of someone putting a garage on some of these small lots, the shed would have to be behind the house, the rear of the house. So either way, if they're parking on a gravel in the front of the house, they'd have to create the gravel all the way up to the side of their house and get to this accessory structure.
They can put it up to the front plane, so if you picture the box, like the front plane of the house.
Okay.
Anything behind that front plane aside, and then rear. I mean, corner lots are a little different, you know, as everybody knows, but, yeah. So, yeah, I mean.
But in the side yard of some of these smaller lots, there's not enough room to fit any accessory structure on the side of the house, so.
So can we just break it, do you mind if we just recap and just break it down?
Yeah, because what we want to do is give the group, just to remind everybody, feedback, and then you guys are gonna take this feedback and make your modifications, so.
So I think the, if I might, so depending on lot size, if you want, it's 100 feet or 200 feet? Is that, everybody's, is that the way everybody would agree to whatever?
And by size, you're saying by zone essentially?
Yeah.
R4, R5, okay. And that's how we would distinguish them, I assume?
As a factor.
Yep.
So somebody with a smaller lot wants to put a bigger shed, they have to come in and get a variance?
Yes.
Pay $3,000 for it?
I am getting back the grades.
That's not helping.
Money, but 10-foot. If you got 10-foot.
If you're on a 50 by 100 lot and you put a 200-foot shed, that's 4% of the lot that you're putting shed on, right?
That's not counting the house.
Right, but if you want to put 120 square foot shed, you're gonna have to come in and get a variance and it's gonna cost you $3,000 to put a $1,200 shed on your lot?
But if we're incorporating this into the total lot coverage, doesn't it kind of scale itself?
Yes.
Right. And I think that's where I'm just trying to clarify what, to that point.
That's true.
I think that's the point you were trying to make, is like.
Get rid of this, right, the gravel and the other things that get you around that issue. Just call it coverage.
Now they have to comply with this other ordinance and it.
Makes sense.
And are you, 100 square foot as a guide, is that reasonable then?
No, I think we're saying that if we just do 200 across the board as the maximum, these smaller, these smaller properties will be violating a different ordinance if they put too big a shed.
I get that, I just don't know if the math works out that way, to be honest with you. I mean, it doesn't seem like a lot, a difference. Yeah, it'd have to be a very small house, you have, I don't think the math would work out. Because you're only talking about 100 square feet, 10 by 10, on a lot that may be a quarter acre and the house may not be, could be quite small. And the driveway could be.
It's their decision, Dave, it'll be up to 200 square feet. If they want to put a 100 square foot shed, that's fine.
I don't disagree with his decision, but for me, it's the neighbor. But all of a sudden, I've got now, 20 by 10 is a big shed.
That's what we've been saying.
It's a big shed.
It might not be when the person goes to sell their house. What if their neighbor goes to sell their house and all of a sudden they go for showing and all of a sudden on a 50 by 100 lot, there's a 200-foot shed with a 10 and a half-foot peak?
That's pretty.
In the back of it, then.
You're buying a house, you're not buying your neighbor's house. I mean, it's there, it is what it is. And you can't make decisions for what your neighbor's on.
Right now, we've got 100 square feet is what we have, so.
Right, that's what we're trying to change.
But what, what level of change?
Is there a way? Guys, just interviewing, is there a way that we could fairly easily do a little bit of an impact analysis with regards to this? We know the types of lots we're talking about. Is just try to do an assessment in regards to the impact of that?
Yes. Walk down Main Avenue in the Sterling Business District. Those are all 50-foot lots, except the hotel. And most of them have a 10-foot setback on both sides of the building, which is just about enough to get a driveway through. And walk back on the, you start with Dr. Lang's property. She's got a 50-foot lot with a driveway that goes to the back and she's got six parking spaces in the back. Now visualize replacing some of those parking spaces with a 200-square-foot shed and then transport that to an all-residential neighborhood. But if you want to see what this would look like, look at the driveways that exist on Main Avenue next to the businesses. Look at, look at the pizza joint, Marcello's, now Brooklyn something. Or, no, they've changed their name again. That's a good example of a driveway that just barely fits the side of the building and then in the back, how would a shed look if you were in a totally residential neighborhood?
Well, if someone is gonna put a 200-square-foot shed on one of these small lots, they're most likely going to infringe on setbacks and they're gonna have to come in and get a variance for that.
So what's the average size of a parking space? Average parking space is probably?
8 by 12.
No, park space, about 8 by 18.
Yeah, that's.
So you're basically saying of the six parking spaces, putting a shed in one of the six spaces, right? That's 144 square feet. So.
It's not two spaces, it's like a space and a half.
Well, don't forget that you've, that the measurement, the setback measurement is not from the wall, it's from the edge of the gutter. So take another six inches, 12 inches off of that and then you've got, if you're gonna try to beat the lot coverage issue by putting it on stone, the stone's gotta be two feet outside the building, outside the drip line. And now all of a sudden, you're talking about a larger footprint than just 200 feet. It, you gotta draw pictures and get numerical with this.
Do you have enough input to close our discussion on the shed to at least come back?
Yep.
Can I, can I? I'm very sorry to open, possibly open up a can of worms.
That's cute.
So I'm looking up your ordinance online and, Deb, I might need you to correct me here, but I don't see any definition.
Yeah, but show me one with a garage door.
Guys.
This is actually, this is kind of Dennis's point here.
Yes, please.
I don't see any definition for shed or residential shed in the definitions.
No, of course.
Right. There is a definition for a private garage, so something maybe to consider, maybe define shed. That way, you could write something in there that says, you know, storage of cars is not permitted or something like that, you know? It'd be definitely useful to define it, right, if you're trying to make a distinction.
That's a very good point.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I'll take it all.
Okay, so in the sake of time, I want to move on if we're comfortable.
The?
Yes, yes, please.
No, I was just gonna say, at a certain point, I know we want to avoid this, but if we're not gonna come to a perfect conclusion, there is time for public comment.
Of course.
So, you know, we're making a lot of assumptions on what the public wants and I think we should put the very best version forward, but if we're not gonna come to a perfect resolution between us, then maybe public comment.
And we want to, and we want to present a thoughtful approach, which that's what we're doing.
Yes, of course.
And Tom, maybe you could just talk a little bit about the bundling and how we want to maybe the next step.
Yeah, so I don't know if a public comment happens here. I think that happens when it goes to the TC and TC does its two readings and that's when the public input, which then can come back to us for further. And I'm happy to take that on as well, you know, take on the feedback. So there are a lot of ordinances that need to be cleaned up. I know Deborah's got some that she needs to give to me. I know Dennis has a list of things he needs to give to me in my format. And what we want to do is bundle things, just like we presented the last three and here we're talking 33% of the three that we worked on. But the idea is to bundle it so that way we have healthy discussions and that we start moving this stuff to the TC so the TC can do what they need to do with it. If it comes back to us, it comes back to us. If it doesn't, parts of it comes back to us and others continue on, that's great. That's the objective. But it's all about trying to get momentum on stuff that has been stale for quite some time and it's time to tackle it. So that's the rationale behind the bundling. And for the deputy mayor and the committeemen, I want to keep you guys busy.
Let's just confirm what we talked about before. So when the board makes changes, Chris or Steve, Chris's office needs to write that up, come back to the board, we all, you vote on it, approve, okay, this is gonna go. And then once that's written up, it's voted on, then we can send it to the TC. They do their public hearings and, you know, do everything, then it comes back to us for just final review and.
Master plan consistency.
Right, master plan consistency.
So thank you for that, because we have two that we did agree on and we need to start seeing the next steps of that.
Okay.
As it progresses. So I think Chris was here last time.
I think Matt was here last time.
You're Chris?
I know, it's, we're a very similar bill, we both have beers around here. I know, I confuse them all the time.
So Matt, he was the one that was here?
Okay, I'll collab with him.
So he needs to do those two pieces. It was the fence and it was the, what was the second one? What did the other one work on?
Well, did we scrap one?
Huh?
Didn't, because didn't we have three?
Shed wasn't the one that we moved, we had three.
Was it generator?
Sign, it's a sign.
Oh, the sign.
Sign, fence and sheds.
Yeah, I don't think we get, I don't think the board gave Matt official, go ahead and put this in ordinance format, so.
No, we didn't.
We need to do that.
No, we didn't. I'll take ownership of not getting that done.
All right, so just to be clear, so it was fence and, I'm sorry, what was the other one, sign? Those are the two that you guys discussed.
Home office sign.
Signs for residential, home office.
Home office sign.
Oh, right. Yes, back to the.
That two came out of an application.
I remember that one very well. Okay, so are you asking us to draft an ordinance at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
So you might have to go to the videotape to see what was discussed.
Okay, no problem. Hopefully Matt took notes and either he or I can, you know, go and put it together. Probably not being made, but regardless.
Thanks, Dennis, we're gonna move on to the next item. Are you, is this associated with the ordinance discussion?
No, it is an ordinance issue.
Okay.
Some months ago, at one of these meetings, you mentioned that the ordinance committee had gone through the master plan and had come up with a list of something like 180 items that had to be corrected. Can I see that list?
I think we have it.
I thought we had distributed it.
Distributed it.
No.
You don't have a copy?
I don't have it. And the last time I asked you, you said you'd send it to me and you didn't.
I'm sure I sent it, I sent it to everybody.
You did?
We'll distribute it again.
Would you send it to me again, please?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Can you send me your ordinance stuff in my format? Can you send me your ordinance stuff in my format?
Why don't you guys have an offline discussion?
Yeah, okay, let's have an offline discussion.
Okay. All right, moving right along. The last item before adjournment is old and new business and I know, Dennis, you have an outline addressing the SOPs and bylaws. This was something that you requested at the outset of the year. Please, take it away.
SOP. Let me tell you about the history of the SOP situation. About six years ago, Mr. Jones started a project that was called Policy and Procedures at the time. And that sort of ran downhill and never got to the board. And then in 2000, we created an Administrative Policy Committee to pick that up again. And surprisingly, no one gave a damn. We had seven meetings in early 2000, in January, February and March. And other than the attorney and myself, the greatest attendance was, by any other member of the committee, was three of those seven meetings. Which means that taken over the span of seven meetings, we had a 57% attendance. The problem with that is that I spent most of the time between meetings creating new drafts, highlighting the stuff that you missed because you didn't come to the last meeting. And then the next meeting, we had to regurgitate the stuff that people missed. And in some cases, I have a record of two regurgitations in a row because somebody had missed those first two meetings and didn't show up till the third meeting and needed to be briefed on what they had missed in the prior two meetings. And mercifully, that project ended abruptly with COVID because we weren't able to hold meetings in the building anymore. We had to, and so that committee died, a very prudent death, thanks to the COVID virus. That's the only good thing that ever came out of that virus, was it killed the Administrative Policy Committee. And then it sat dormant for three years because we were mostly focused on big applications and the master plan. And the chairman graciously allowed me to volunteer again to try to get this started. And what I have provided today is a one-page synopsis of what I think we're gonna do. Now, this is based on the fact that four days ago, I started going through my computer trying to rake out all the writings from past years and all my notes along the way about stuff that needed to be put into this SOP. And surprisingly, after I found 49 documents, I said, I think I'm about two-thirds of the way through, trying to put this all in one place. And then I said, but what are we writing? Are we writing a policy manual or an administrative policy or a handbook or guidelines or policy and procedures? Those are all the titles of documents that I was. Those are all the titles of documents that I was able to resurrect over the past six years. Surprisingly, I found good stuff that was contributed by members of the short-lived committee. Don, Tom, and one missing member, John Felby contributed. And, and I have those contributions, and they need to be integrated. But as I thought about what it is we're really trying to do, I realized that we have two separate chores here. One is bylaws. We are operating under rules that are established by statute and by ordinance, but they are not a complete set of what we do and how we do it. The organization needs bylaws, and Attorney Pidgen is very good about that. He puts an ordinance in front of the township committee about holding Zoom meetings. And somebody on the township committee, using no other words, no other adjectives, somebody on the township committee says, should this apply to the planning board and the zoning board? And Jack's immediate response is, no, those boards have their own bylaws. Well, surprise, those boards don't have their own bylaws, and I'm not going to tell that to Jack in public. But we need a set of bylaws that extends the ordinance just a little bit to cover all the things that are official and quasi-official about the way this board operates. That's one document.
Dennis, just a quick question to interject. So, in your research, we have no existing set of bylaws for this board?
That is, I have, I do not have one, no. Now, the zoning board, under Dr. Baer, created a six-page document. But I'm not sure what the title of it was, but it was a bunch of stuff heaped into a document, mostly having to do with the qualification and selection of consultants. I think that's why he wrote it in the first place. When Dr. Baer left the zoning board, that document sort of died, and I don't think anybody has ever tried to give it any official standing since then. But we, and as you see in my bottom line of this little table, the bylaws are probably no more than three pages. A lot of it will refer to the ordinance, for example, the membership of this board. Doesn't have to be defined in the bylaws because it's defined in the ordinance. And so, we'll refer back to that. The bylaws will just fill in the cracks. For example, Zoom versus courtroom. The township committee insists on having hybrid meetings. Both the boards have decided to stick with courtroom only, mostly because of the hearing notice legality. So, there will be a short set of bylaws to fill in the gaps. And then there is an SOP, and compared line by line with bylaws on this very simple chart, which you can take a look at in your spare time. The SOP is intended to be the chairman's statement of how we're going to run this damn show for the next year. It is not approved or adopted. It's just a document that floats around, and there's a copy in everybody's drawer if they want to pull it out. It's a reference document. It is not a public document. It's strictly internal to the board. It can be written and amended by anybody who has the willingness to sit down and think through problems and write them down and write answers and get the chairman to agree. Because this is essentially an internal working reference material, reference document. It's not subject to the OPRH. It just supplements and extends the formal language of the ordinance and the bylaws. For example, the bylaws will say meetings are held in the courtroom. The SOP will say meetings are held in the courtroom because hybrid is a nuisance. And besides that, we've got a technicality with meeting notices that if an applicant notices a meeting for the courtroom, it's got to be held in the courtroom, period. That additional historical information will go in the SOP so that you don't have to ask the question again and get the same answer.
Dennis, in our discussion, one of the key attributes to the SOP is to help new members, correct?
That's what it says, mainly intended as a primer for new members and as a checklist for complex sequences. For example, if you...
Yeah, go ahead. No, just finish.
Where do you go?
So, on the zone, on our website, with Board of Adjustment, there's Rules for the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Is that Tom?
And that was adopted in 2015.
2015.
Seventeen?
Yeah, that's Tom Baer's document.
It's everything you guys are talking about. So, why don't we copy this and do something for us?
No, because that is nowhere near complete. It doesn't understand the levels of legality and flexibility involved, and they haven't used it since Tom Baer left.
But I'm following this. Everything that you're saying is in here, where the meeting is, et cetera, et cetera. I'm saying this is a starting point. It's not exact.
It may, it is one of 49 other starting points that I have collected.
It's a starting point that's done already.
Right, that's, that's on the...
It's done by people who are no longer with us under circumstances that no longer apply.
There's a lot of interest in common sense.
Scott, if you would like to participate actively, I mean, 10, 20 hours a week, I'd be glad to take your advice. Otherwise, I'm showing you the outline of how I would like to run with this.
I think all Scott's doing is pointing out that this document exists, it's on the website. I think that it would behoove us to, as a board, take a look at it, Dennis?
I'll ask Dr. Baer what he thinks is still appropriate.
He's not here. He's deceased.
I said that maliciously.
Thank you. It's right there, nice length, right?
Is there, just so we...
Hey, it's easy enough to dredge, it's easy enough to dredge out somebody else's writing. The question is, does it apply to us in this year with this membership, with this political environment and social environment that we are dealing with? I'm not going to start with a clean slate, but I'm also not going to start with somebody else's document as a framework. This is not an official document. The fact that you found that on the website means that it's a discoverable official document.
It is an official, it was adopted.
It was adopted by the zoning board nine years ago.
Yeah, 2015. So, what we...
And don't forget, the zoning board's mission is different from ours.
I'm not saying it's exact. It's a template.
It's a template.
It's not even a template. It's Dr. Baer's musings.
Start from scratch. Let's waste more time. We've already talked about sheds for 50 minutes.
So, is it that we'll print it out, the next meeting, we all review it, and then we come in and have a discussion? Is that kind of...
I think, Dennis, I've asked Dennis to put together this. Thank you, Dennis, for putting together this outline.
Now, we, we...
I think it's, just to finish, I think what we're to do is to give Dennis some feedback.
Please, I...
On the outline for this, or to talk and certainly support Dennis or volunteer if you'd like, but I think, Dennis, you have the ball.
Thank you.
I'd like to see you push this along.
I will take any feedback that anyone wants to offer me on a one-to-one basis. I don't expect that the SOP will be the subject of discussion in meetings. You may or may not agree with what's written, but that's okay. You can ignore those sections that you don't agree with. And, or if you want to suggest changes, fine, do that. On the other hand, the bylaws will be a formal document, and we will discuss it, and we will adopt it by resolution, but it will be very brief, and I will try to get that ready for a first discussion before our next meeting.
My only comment, Dennis, if I might, my only one quick, just a conversation comment, is SOP not public? Do we really want a non-public document that we have some formal adherence to?
I don't want to, yeah, I don't want to jump ahead of it without doing a little bit of research, but I'm fairly certain it would still be OPRH.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why are we not including it to the public? What's the purpose of that?
I don't know what...
Dennis, that's to you. What would be the purpose of keeping this from the public?
I'm sorry, one more time?
What would be the purpose of, David asked the question, and I, that's always going to be my question, too. I don't think we can keep this from the public. What would be your purpose of keeping it from the public?
It is only, only because the SOP is intended to be a tutorial document, and it's going to say some things that are probably not appropriate for the public. We're going to talk, the SOP is going to describe why we rejected certain ideas in the past. And, and, yeah, the public could read it, the public could not read it, who cares? I don't want to put a 50-page document out there that people can pick at.
Well, that's not up to you, that's up to the OPRH.
Yeah. Again, I didn't have to look into it, but I'm fairly certain...
Could you please, for some homework, I'm sorry, just if you could look into that?
If anybody has an alternative scheme and wants to spend the time at building it, I'd be glad to walk away from this project that Don has assigned to me.
Oh, okay. We'll get you some feedback, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sandow, I'm kind of almost resonant to ask, but we, my firm, we'd have like a template set of bylaws that we provide to all the boards we represent. Would you like me to send you a copy if you want to take a look?
No, I would not like to see it because I don't trust anything that your firm puts out.
I'm calling for it, okay? Inappropriate, and I can't...
Can you distribute that?
I...
Chris, why don't you send it to the rest of the board?
Thank you. That'd be helpful.
Is there...
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Well done. Good night.